Everyone's patience as we work through our glitches here. Going to order the meeting at Southern Lee High School Board. Including the attendance. Everybody's here. Mrs. Desai is not here, so I'm standing in her role, in her absence. So we have eight members of the board here tonight. Before we get started. Excuse me, I've been recovering from from hiatus for a while, so. I don't know why I got so fortunate, but I've only presided over two meetings in my ten years as Vice President. And the first was in June when we welcomed Dr. Larry Muslin as our intern super. And this evening is tonight while we welcome Dr. Mann to his first official meeting as the Superintendent of Southern Lee High. So I do want to take a couple of quick minutes for anybody who's not familiar with Dr. Mann and share some of his background, a charred degree, which is hard because he has so much experience and is bringing to the table. But he does have a really wealth of experience coming to us from Abington Heights where he served as for seventeen years Superintendent. When the school board started the search for Superintendent, we asked all the stakeholders to share what their desires and interests were in terms of a leader for the Southern Lee High community. And what we heard consistently was that experience, communication, accessibility were the top priorities in a leader for our district. So we're confident that Dr. Mann brings those qualities and more to the leadership role of S D S L S D. He comes to us with experience as a teacher, an assistant principal, a baseball coach, a principal, superintendent. He's led major facilities projects. He holds an M B A from UMass Amherst, I believe. So not only does he understand education, but he is well versed in the financial aspects of leading a district. And already in the short time that he's been here, we've already seen how focused Dr. Mann is on students and academics. So we're thrilled about all of that. And just one other thing I wanted to share quickly is that during the interview process, one of the things that Dr. Mann said consistently throughout the interviews was the importance of relationships. And another thing that really stuck out to me was how frequently he used the word kindness. And I think that just really speaks to his character, you know, the kind of person leader that he is going to be having for a district that's incredibly fortunate to have somebody with the breadth and depth of experience that Dr. Mann brings to the table, but also somebody who values relationships and community. And he's going to be a regular presence throughout the buildings and throughout the school community. So welcome, Dr. Mann.
I want to thank you for that welcome. I am so grateful for it. And I will also say it is it is a privilege of a lifetime to be able to sit here and as Superintendent, it's been daunting, even though I've been here in this chair of any time to ever here. As I approach the table tonight, I thought, wow, this is absolutely amazing stuff. I'm so grateful for the opportunity. And it is a privilege of a lifetime to be here. And I hope to deliver on those very kind words that came along.
And before we move further, we want to move to one C and do the pledge of allegiance.
To the pride of the United States of America, we salute your mother, our citizens, our nation, our empire, and your legal, and your freedom and justice for all.
So we are in the beginning of our public comments section. For the discussions that we were having before the beginning of the meeting was that, as you know, we've been discussing policies related to board governance and public comment. Two of the policies passed in the last meeting, we have one policy that needs to be voted on. And because that is still in flux, we are going to operate under the previous procedures for this evening. So while we consider the changes. So with that, we will start, public comment comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The comment period is provided input of board items before a vote. Speakers must be district residents and sign in noting the topic on which they intend to speak. Because this is a business meeting, there will not be a response period from the board. We ask the comments to be directed to the board, and you may not yield your time to a speaker that has already utilized their time. Our first speaker is Paul Diebel.
Good evening. He's got a question. I'm speaking today. I'm disturbed by the recent policy change to policy zero zero six and the second reading changes to policy nine oh three, which is on the agenda for today. Community input should be valued and encouraged rather than limited. These policy recommendations seek to stifle community input with reduced transparency. These changes in policies are not brought about by demand from the community, but rather by recommendations from a political lobbying group, the National School Boards Association. This is the same N S B A that recently sent a letter to President Biden, associating community members who speak out at board meetings as domestic terrorists and committed hate crimes. Because of this divisive rhetoric from the N S B A, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, with which Southern Lee High is a paying member of, we've spent tens of thousands of dollars each year to be part of this association. The P S B A has voted to withdraw and distance themselves from the N S B A. Our school board should not be adopting guidance from politically driven organizations like the N S B A, as this board felt against the proposed changes to policy nine oh three, the recent changes to policy zero zero states that were made at the last meeting. That's why this board would reconsider using taxpayer funds to be a member of any political lobbying group such as the P S B A. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Donna Knapp.
My name is Donna Knapp. You may remember me speaking as an advocate for our theater and music students. I am thrilled that we're going to have a fall show in November and an audience for the first time in two years. Last month, I pointed out the inconsistencies between our performers versus athletes and allowing masks is optional. Inside sports have been allowed for weeks and months now without masks, but in just two short weeks, there will be twelve theater performers all required a mask while performing onstage long length. I asked the administration to allow them for just five days during the show to show their face and speak without a handicap of wearing a mask. Broadway's forty-seven shows have been doing it. Pennsylvania's community theaters have been doing it. Why can't we? Mr. Ruff and the administration have not realized these inconsistencies. And Mr. Ruff tries best to help him find something in writing from the C D C, Pennsylvania Department of Health, and Pennsylvania Department of Education's website, allowing any exceptions specific to stage performers to remove their mask while performing for an audience. He even called other schools, and I thank him for everything he did. Nowhere are performers are mentioned. Our state is taking no responsibility for this overlooked group. I then called the Department of Health and spoke with them for at least twenty minutes. The gentleman I spoke with put me on hold to speak with twenty-five employees in the next room. He asked if any are aware of rules or guidelines specific to performers and masking. When he returned, he was very surprised to tell me that not only is it not written anywhere, but no one has ever received a phone call like mine. He read the same familiar sentences written on the C D C and D O E website, where they only mention athletes, indoor sports, and musicians while playing an instrument. He agreed with me, this makes no sense, and suggested I write to our Governor Wolf and ask him for help. I did exactly that and received a cut and paste answer via email, more than likely from his intern, giving me the same information, still not answering my question. Where is it in writing for our public schools with masking rules specific to the extracurricular group of theater? They finally responded and wanted to know specifically which school I'm speaking for. I immediately replied and said, I'm not speaking. I am speaking on behalf of all public schools in the state of Pennsylvania. They are afraid to allow our students to take their mask off while performing onstage because they do not want to go against the mandates. We just need written guidelines specific to theater and music, still don't answer answers. Performing is just as important to our kids' mental health as sports is for athletes. I still do not understand how cheerleader, wrestler, basketball player, volleyball player could scream, yell, and have physical contact for twelve weeks unmasked. Yet eight kids onstage cannot speak on mics for only five days. I do not understand why on Friday, at the pep rally, our dancers, who are exerting themselves, do we flips, still had to wear a mask because they're classified performers and not athletes. It makes no sense. Why don't all these activities fall under the same guidelines? I've learned a lot this past month, and I realize it is not Southern Lee High School District who is holding us back, people. It's our state. It's up to us as a community to be our kids' advocates and speak to the right people in Harrisburg. I'm urging you to join me and get involved by calling or emailing them. We need for them to recognize the hypocrisy and the need for our kids to be also acknowledged and allowed to do their extracurricular sport without a hat mask handicap. They're under hotlines, running around with a mask on, all while performing their lines. We need our governor to acknowledge all students and fight for the same courtesies and exceptions given to our athletes. Please call and write your local representative or anyone who may be able to get our Governor Wolf to listen. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Doug Lister.
Thank you. In the spring of this year, the Republican Committee held a meet the candidates night. All seven school board candidates that identified their political affiliation as Republicans spoke, as did regional candidates. The Spartan logo was intended to be used as a backdrop. Because of threatened legal action, we had to remove that backdrop because the solicitor had issued a cease and desist order to, among others, our county chairman and Lee High County Republican Party. The issue of all trademark infringement regarding the logo, no actionable results followed as we expected. And I and others viewed this as nothing more than election interference from a solicitor who would do anything that the board and superintendent asked him to do, even if it was politically motivated. We fast forward several months, and we discovered through our right to no request that there was more election interference. This time in emails through taxpayer paid platforms involving a rogue and corrupt Superintendent, Ms. Ebson, Ms. Desai, and Ms. Nord. Ms. Nord writing, we don't want to make it a harder to find in the election. Based on this revelation, it is hard to assume that perhaps the logo issue, the Nord email, and election interference might be related. If Ms. Nord was willing to use her position on the board to electioneer and wordsmith communication for the benefit of the Democratic Party, might candidate Parsons have petitioned the board, the superintendent, or the solicitor to pursue litigation against her political rivals? We can all agree, I'm sure, that that candidate Parsons was obligated to recuse herself on this matter. If she failed to use it, which is a reasonable question to ask, then what is the responsibility of fellow board members, the superintendent, and the solicitor to hold her accountable? I am not confident that anyone will hold anyone to account, since Ms. Nord's clearly inappropriate email was never fully addressed, and her fashionably inaccurate and unbelievable justification for her email was never fully challenged by the board. Let's review. In the last seventeen months, this board has wasted money on the hiring of a D E I consultant by a rogue superintendent that failed to disclose a clear conflict of interest in recommending a hire. The board and the solicitor were asleep at the wheel. The board spent taxpayer dollars on a survey and an evaluation by C R T proponent Dr. Joseph Allen violated federal law, revealing five student death, and the entire plan was scrapped. The solicitor and the leadership of this board issued no apologies for failing to catch this monumental error that could have jeopardized millions of dollars in federal educational funding. Now the taxpayers have had to foot the bill for private investigation by the Litvin Law Group to figure out what went wrong in all this failed oversight. I'll reserve three minutes.
Next speaker is Doug Lister.
Hello. Hello. I'm the chairman of SLATE. Vicki Mon, myself, and the four candidates, Ping Mon, Wayak, Ryan Arts, are part of the SLATE organization. So I speak for the Republican Committee. I'm going to give the perspective on the same issue from SLATE candidates. The reason why you guys are talking about weaponizing words, C R T and R T K, the real weaponization this year that has occurred is weaponizing the solicitor to come after SLATE. So on Friday, the week prior to the main primary, we received a cease and desist letter from the solicitor saying that we did not, in the next five days, destroy any ownership of the Logo. We quote, "The district will be forced to take appropriate legal action against you. We seek all available damages and remedies." Quick Google search reveals that that can cost thousands, tens of thousands of dollars. Not to mention that we have to defend that as we're ten days out from the election. You've given us five days to destroy all the materials. That wasn't going to happen, so we hired a lawyer at our own expense and defended it, which we successfully did. Our lawyer was an expert in copyright law. And if you guys would like to see both letters, I think you would get a lesson in competency. When we received that on a Friday afternoon, that's a really far thing from the compassion and kindness and ideals that you guys purport to endorse. How about calling us or reaching out and saying, let's have a private meeting and discuss the use of the Logo? Because to give it context, we've been using that logo for nine months on yard signs that weren't political at that point, but they were yard signs and teachers' logo, probably. There was never any action from anybody or any discussion about that. So we questioned ultimately the timing of that threat, and we thought you guys had most of the game from that. Mrs. Parsons had the most of the game. In fact, on October twenty-second, she, this year, just last Friday, she said, the key to her, actually, I have a quote, "I bought the yard signs." I'm pretty sure that's why we won. The cease and desist letter demanded we remove and destroy all those. That's, that begs the question, do you, Mrs. Parsons, have any email communications with Dr. Ebson of board members related to the cease and desist letter that sent out to four state candidates and the two members, the Chair and Secretary of the PAC? Other than what we say, this is a major conflicts of interest, major conflict of interest for you to comment on this matter, you're competing against the candidates in an election that was literally evasively. You and your SLATE would definitely stand the game if all of the SLATE candidate signs literature and case of pages were removed. And as you hold a very partisan publicly elected position on a Democrat committee, you would never risk the appearance of inferiority by using your influence in your nonpartisan position in such a manner, especially asked without an email.
I'm sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
We deserve to have the comments section. So moving on. To section three. Yes, so just for the order, we are going to take items three D and three E, unless anyone objects, we'll move those to the communications section of the agenda. So that puts us at three A. Mr. Font, can you please announce our executive session?
Certainly, there was an executive session this evening prior to this meeting, so October twenty-fifth, to discuss both the confidential student matter and several personnel matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item three B. I've got a motion to approve the minutes on October eleventh, workshop meeting.
Two minutes.
Second.
Can I get a vote? Oh, I think this is more, forgot. New with this. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on to item three C. I've got a motion to approve the board minutes of October eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
Two minutes.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So moving on to four A, Superintendent's report. The four A is reading of board policy nine oh three, kind of got a motion to approve the second reading of board policy nine oh three.
Two minutes.
Comments, questions?
I would have to ask that, given what the P S B A has done in the last week and a half, and that it was their recommendation to put this policy in place because of what the national board was recommending, that we do step away from this and we rescind the old policies. This is ridiculous that we're going to cut off public comment and control public comment when we should be seeking help and listening to anything that they have to say, on whatever topic they want to speak on, at whatever point in the meeting they wish to speak on it. It just, it goes against everything that this board has meant for years. And I will not vote for this. And I honestly hope that you all think about what you're putting here in the policy and step away from it.
I agree. Of course, my concerns about it over the last two or three meetings. I agree with Bill and the speaker that, you know, that I think the general thrust of this is coming out of P S B A. And I know P S B A is now disavowed N S B A. But the general idea is that that parents coming to school board meetings are disruptive and are not really worth hearing. I continue to think that we should be doing everything we can to expand the ability of people to come in and communicate because on either side of any issue, because I continue to believe that at the local level, which the school board ultimately is, it's sort of the last area that allows for the individual to come here and feel heard on whatever issue they have a problem, or they think is great, or wherever in between. And I really think that helps to actually lower the temperature of debate in the community because it's when you begin to do things like this, I think, and limit people's ability to come in and be heard, that they feel they're being stifled and then they're not heard. And then they, you know, I think that exacerbates the issue. I've always been in favor of hearing people. I continue to say that this too shall pass. That ultimately, some of this pandemic and some of the issues will pass and will go back to probably having two or three people that come to a meeting at the most that want to speak about something. And we're going to hold evidently a number of them here alone this evening, when they can talk to us later. And I continue to think it's problematic that we're talking here about what we think is too lengthy or personally directed. I mean, I really think it's First Amendment problematic, which I don't know that the P S B A or the N S B A cares about the First Amendment. Because, you know, I do think they see these people as domestic terrorists, which is crazy. And it's really just a way of, you know, frightening people and essentially saying, look, the F B I is going to come and look at you if you're coming to a school board meeting and you're fired up about something. I mean, that is not America. And I'm not saying that this board is adopting that, but that is what the N S B A said. And that's what the P S B A, who spends a lot of money with the N S B A, while they now have backed away from it because guess what? There's sixty-seven counties in Pennsylvania, and none of them, I suspect, didn't much appreciate the P S B A taking that stance. I agree with this comment earlier. Over ten years ago, I asked that to be part of the P S B A. Not only is this board part of the P S B A, individuals, board members are actually part of the P S B A. I mean, talk about your right to organize and how you want. So I get their literature sent to my house. I get their emails sent to me, and I generally don't agree with ninety percent of them. So I would love to revisit that issue. That's a long-winded way of saying, I don't think nine oh three is a good policy. I think it's trying to achieve something that's not necessary. I think hearing from our community is vital on all sides of every issue. Let people come and be heard. And let it be in a way that is inviting and is easy for them to be here. You know, we're here, we're going to be here. It's our job to listen, and it's important to listen. And I don't think nine oh three encourages that, and therefore, I'll certainly be voting against it. And as Bill said, I hope we'll rethink this policy in light of some of the information we've heard and learned most recent. Thank you.
I'm all in favor of listening to people. I'd like to listen to them before the meeting, after the meeting. I think that's great. I think the point of this is to make the meeting more streamlined, so that when people talk at the beginning, they're talking about things you're going to be voting on and discussing, so you can concentrate and listen to them and hear their input on those issues. And then you can think, okay, that might change my mind. I think I'll, you know, I'll vote on that issue that way. And then at the end, they can say whatever they'd like about anything. And I get that, yeah, meetings might go on a little bit long, and it might be inconvenient to wait to then speak your piece, but this is a business meeting. And this is the way that most school boards work right now. You hear people talk on the agenda items at the beginning, and then they talk on whatever they want at the end. I don't think it's that big a deal. We made it. We talked last time about waving in if we wanted to. If there's not many people in the audience, no big deal. Go ahead, wave it. Anyone can say what they want. I mean, tonight, there's three people signed in, so we could have just waved it. I don't think it's that, that some extreme thing is just to streamline our meeting, especially if we have something that's, we have a lot of agenda items, and we, you know, just want to hear about those agenda items.
I do agree with that, simply because, just because it's P S B A doesn't mean that it's not valid. We, like Kathy just said, it's about making a business meeting, a business meeting. And when we're sitting and listening to things that are completely off of the agenda, now I'm not concentrating on what's on the agenda. I'm still thinking about the things that were said about things completely unrelated to the business that we're trying to discuss tonight. I'm not thinking about that. I'm thinking about the off-topic things from visitor comments. And that defeats the purpose of the business meeting. I don't see it as cycling anybody. I don't see it as stopping anybody from speaking. Everybody that would like to speak is still more than welcome to speak. Everybody still gets their chance to speak. Nobody is being told they can't. Nobody is being turned away. It's just a more streamlined business function because it is, again, a business meeting.
I'm not sure how to, I guess, say this in an eloquent manner, but I guess I, one thing that I have had a difficult time with lately is understanding why everything is always the worst thing imaginable. Like, why is it any action, it seems, that's taken by well-meaning individuals sitting up here who did this in order to give back to their community? Why is it always assumed that there's this underlying suspicion that we're doing it to hurt members of the community, for lack of a better word, or to remove your, remove rights? There's no reason for that. Like, we're all in this community together. I hear what people are saying. I certainly, even if I don't agree, I'm always willing to listen. That's just the type of person I am. And it's interesting, because when I've chosen to speak at times, it's been taken and twisted into words that I never said and used against me, which is fine. I guess in a public role, so I have to accept that. But truly, I do, I do agree that while it might be inconvenient to have to sit through a whole meeting, if you truly do want to contribute and speak up at a meeting, you're kind of deciding already to invest that time. I do think that since this is the way most school board meetings are structured. I like structure. I've always, that's really what, to me, supporting this is. I agree that if there's only a few people signed in, and today certainly there's not a lot, we could certainly waive that. And we've discussed that before. I would be in favor of it, just to move things along. I mean, I'm not, it's not something that we're locked into, and it's not trying to take away anyone's freedom of speech. Why do we always have to jump to that assumption that we're all, I'm probably exceeding my three minutes if I had it, but I just, I just, we're not the bad guys. I'm not a bad person. I believe in this community, and I decided to do this for a reason.
Anyone else have a comment?
Anyone else have a comment?
Just the only thing I would like to say is I think the reason this conversation came up very fittingly is that we had Dr. Mussalene as our interim superintendent. And it was a time of transition and it was a time of reflection. And it was time of looking at things with fresh eyes. Like, there are a couple of things that he brought to the table and said, "Hey, folks, this is something you might want to look at and consider. And here's why." And I will say that this is a conversation that has come up periodically throughout my time on the board. This idea to streamline the meeting, just echoing everything anybody has said. It is, it would, I think it's mischaracterizing it to say that it's a reaction to our current political climate, this particular issue. This has come up many times. And when we entered into this conversation, it was with my understanding that this was, as Dr. Mussalene said, a time of reflection, a time of looking at comparing ourselves to how other boards function and taking those things that would help us from those other boards. And I think we've heard people speak tonight about how this could help this board. And also, it lends flexibility, as Mr. Khan hopefully pointed out last time, that we can waive this meeting to meeting. But if we have a meeting in which there's something that the community wants to discuss and comes out and we have a great number of folks with a short agenda, there's no reason we can't push that topic to the end to take care of the business that folks came to address at the beginning of a business meeting. This provides flexibility. It's not a reaction to a current political climate, as is my understanding, as I think we entered into this. And I appreciate everyone's comments and I appreciate the flexibility it gives us. I think this increases flexibility. That's all I want to say about the characterization of it in current times. Thank you.
The only thing I would add is, to the point about the ability to suspend it, which we discussed last time, it's actually been in the instructions for as long as I can remember. The way the introductory comments read, so we've, in effect, been waiving it all along. And so, and again, in terms of how this, because the language, and I'll just read it for the record. It says that the comment period is to provide input to the board on items that are before us to vote. And that's how we have always introduced the comment section. So it, but we have elected to not enforce that essentially. So, and I think in terms of, to Mrs. Gaiman's point about the impetus for this, when Dr. Mussalene joined us, one of the things we did bring to his attention was, you know, policy and the need for policy refresh and making sure that our policies are current and consistent. So I don't agree that it was pushed by the PSBA because I don't recall that that was the impetus for the ruling, understanding your issues with PSBA concerning that. I just don't think that was the impetus for this particular policy. I think it was more of this, Dr. Mussalene's and our effort to make our policies more current and consistent and so that, you know, what we're doing, what we have policies are aligned. So, and to the point that, you know, that is, and his point in suggesting was that this is how 95% of school boards run their meetings. So for that reason, you know, I, I've been conflicted about this the whole time. And as I said at the last meeting, I do think that there's value in the streamlining and being consistent, having our policies consistent. And I was reassured by the option to be able to suspend the rules. I think it is also helpful to have the option when we have a huge, when we do have, you know, a massive number of audience speakers that want to speak and we need to get to the business portion of the meeting to be able to defer that to the end of the meeting. I do agree that, and hopefully that's not going to be an ongoing issue. And again, just pardon the stream of consciousness, but I am really conflicted about this policy. And I just, I do think that it is, there's value in allowing people to speak at the beginning of the meeting if they need to, if they have to, you know, leave for various reasons or if they have something that they feel compelled to speak on that is not on the agenda and that they are not able to wait, especially if it's a long meeting. You know, I don't think that was ever the intent, was to, you know, squelch community input. I think we have made, had a long history of welcoming input from all the community, the people that come in and attack us personally. So I'm not, I don't think anybody is attempting to prohibit that in any way, shape, or form.
So a question for this listener, because I remember from the discussion at the last meeting when we were going through these various policies, that you'd commented that this was a recommendation from PSBA. Is that not correct?
PSBA has a foreign book of recommended policies. This is consistent with the policy 903, so that is accurate. They aren't currently recommending it in the sense of sending out communications to school districts saying, "Please adopt 903 if you haven't already done so." This version of 903 has been in their policy manual for as long as I can remember.
And is that the case for the other policies that were voted on at the last meeting?
Yes. Yeah, many, most of the, and they do periodically update them. But this, this particular version has been around for a long time. And by the way, I don't always agree with PSBA either. If I see something in their recommended policy language that I don't think makes sense for Southern Lehigh, I'll let you know. But this particular version has been around for decades.
Then I guess it's just a coincidence that PSBA dropped out of their membership to the national and made various pointed comments about why they were doing it then?
The coincidence is to connect it to policy 903. That's the coincidence. Obviously, what's going on with the national discussion between PSBA and NSBA is what it is. But 903 has been around for a long time and most school districts do the agenda items, non-agenda items, and that's always, well, not always, but it's been the case for decades.
And it has been the case that we have been talking for months and months about policies and the fact that the policies do need to be updated, you know, made current. And that has been kind of a slow process. It's not something that you can undertake lightly. It takes a while. So it's not, it wasn't a direct result of the current climate because it was, it's been part of the policy discussion at the workshop level and discussions for many months. Any other comments, questions before we call vote? Okay, so we're going to do a roll call vote. Should I just go around and comment? Yes, so Mrs. Gaiman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaiman? Mr. Dimick?
No.
Dr. Pasarin?
Aye.
Myself? No.
No.
And again, I'm just to clarify my vote, I do support. So it was a tie vote, which means that the motion does not pass.
Well, and can I just say to the point that I don't think 903 necessarily has to be a bad policy. I think that there are aspects of it that have, the board has disagreed with, which is why it's come down. I do think if we're looking to incorporate policy about governance and how we be meetings, that, you know, it is salvageable if there is some benefit in having it. It's just there's a couple of items in there that are not how we want to be like 95% of other boards. And that's okay, I think.
Once again, you were reading my mind because that was the comment that I was about to make, was that my vote, no, was really limited to the public comment portion of it. I think that the remainder of the policy in terms of the expected way that we hope that the people will conduct themselves. And I do think, I mean, you did make some good points, Mr. Dimick, I think, about some of the language. But, you know, too lengthy means if we don't have that in there, then we don't have the ability. If somebody goes over their three-minute limit. So there are things in there that really do, you know, let themselves to, the ability to conduct a business meeting. So my objection really is only to the public comment portion of it. Okay, moving on to item, I lost track. It's for section four, section, section four. We have nothing in five, six, or seven. So moving on to items eight A and B, does anyone object to taking those together? Okay, can I get a motion?
No.
Comments or questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And the motion passes. We have nothing in item nine, item number 10. We have some exciting business in the Human Resources Department tonight. Should we take the first three individually or? Yes, so in kind of keeping with our theme tonight of outstanding new hires to the district and new additions to the district. The first item, number 10A, is for the Director of Business Services appointment. I'm sorry, I just lose track of my notes here. So can I get a motion to approve the recommendation that Louis, and I'm sorry, but is it Pepe? I wanted to make sure I pronounced it correctly. I thought I had recalled that. I appointed the Director of Business Services for a term of five years, beginning on January 1st, 2022, and ending on December 31st, 2026 pursuant to provisions of the attached employment agreement. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Any comments or questions? I do have one.
Yeah, I was just going, I'm going to wait for the congratulations and thank you until after it passes. But yes, I was, I was going to say congratulations and thank you. And I had the pleasure of, with a few of the board members, of being in the interview process. And we are very, very lucky to have Mr. Pepe joining us here at Southern Lehigh. But I'll let you, I won't steal your thunder on anything else.
It's everybody's thunder. It's really exciting night for Southern Lehigh. I really believe that. Lou comes to us after serving as the CFO and the Assistant Superintendent of City Summit Public Schools in New Jersey since 2008. It was there that he was named the New Jersey Business School Administ, School Business Administrator of the Year in 2018. He also received the Distinguished Service Award from the New Jersey Association of School Business Administrators. He's had numerous other awards, published in professional journals. He's been an adjunct professor and a featured speaker at conferences. He has deep experience with facilities projects, which we all know is priority for the district. So we really value that experience. And he's a proud veteran, having served in the US Army. So we are really thrilled and excited. And unless there's any other comments or questions, I'm excited to call the vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
I always forget that part. All opposed? All right, and then moving on to the next one. We also have our Director of Human Resources appointment. Can I get a motion to approve the recommendation that Anthony Pigeon be appointed as the Director of Human Resources for a term of five years, beginning on January 1st, 2022, and ending on December 31st, 2026 pursuant to provisions of the employment agreement?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Mrs. Gaiman?
Nope, just same, same, same. We are very lucky and we participated in those interviews and we're very lucky to have them. And go ahead. It's a great introduction.
No, just, I mean, again, we were just, I couldn't, I couldn't imagine that we would be as fortunate as we've been in this process. So Tony comes to us also with an exceptional background. Many years at Easton Public Schools where he served as a teacher and assistant principal and a principal before he moved to the Colonial IU. Served there as the Director of HR for nine years before joining Allentown School District as the Executive Director of HR in Allentown. So we are really excited to have Tony. And with that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes?
Welcome.
All right, and then 10C, I would be remiss, well, can I get a motion to approve the independent school employee appointments for Ms. Anne Marie Lowly?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Just my own is that I think I'd be remiss in saying that, as we all are painfully aware right now, that the administrative assistants are the glue that keeps any district together. We rely on them for an inordinate amount of things and their indispensable support for our district. So we're really excited that Ms. Lowly is joining us. She's got extensive experience as well as graduate coordinator at Lehigh. She has had experience at both the Sales and Muhlenberg. So she brings a lot of educational background to the position as well. And I can say with certainty that Dr. Mann is anxiously waiting her around.
Did you have a motion in a second yet?
There is, but we're just correcting.
Okay.
Just so the minutes are clear, where the agenda says due to the requirement, it should say due to the letter.
Oh, yes, thank you.
So the motion hasn't come yet? Well, the motion is due at one anyway, so all you're doing is changing the minutes to make sure it's had.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I guess the only other comment I'd like to say is that, you know, it's just been an incredibly challenging time and I just cannot say thank you enough. And I have to be appreciative of Herculean team effort that was involved in recruiting and hiring these exceptional individuals. Unfortunately, they won't be official for a little bit longer, but I'm just really excited for the district, for this team that is being built here. And so the welcoming you know to Dr. Mann said today, I think the future is bright. Very excited. And let's move on. Does anybody object to taking 10, oh?
Yeah, I was going to say it's E through K.
Yes, so we're going to take 10D through K together?
Second.
Comments or questions? Seeing none?
I have a comment. On B, which is the Act 93, infected contract employee salaries, healthcare. It calls for a 3.75% raise attracted July 1st for all members of the Act 93 group. The Act 93 group is in large part, a large number of our leadership positions outside of the ones specifically appointed. And therefore have relatively high salaries and that's obviously appropriate. I'm going to vote for this, but I'm a little conflicted by the 3.75% raise that is applied universally across the Act 93. You know, to use a word as a code, I don't know how equitable that really, I'm generally troubled by that. I recognize that as I look down the list of folks that are in here, the great sacrifices and great work that these, they have done over the last year. No doubt about that. And that's not, that's not my concern and I think they should be compensated for that. I think they are and they should be valued. My issue with it is more so, I find this often when it applies to this group and some of our higher salaried employees, is that they recognize oftentimes a similar raise or an exact raise to our other personnel in the district. And a 3.75% raise to someone making $120,000 as compared to a 3.5, 3.75% raise to someone making $40,000 or $50,000 in the district or $60,000 is quite different. And the other thing is, I suspect that the 3.75% raise is based off of the raise provided to the Teachers Collective Barbie unit. But the Teachers Collective Barbie unit, generally, those people move on step. And the highest paid, I don't believe, anyway, the highest step teacher, which would be somewhat in the realm of some of the Act 93, are not going to receive a 3.75% raise because so much of that is spent on moving people on step that the people on the highest level don't recognize a 3.75% raise. And so when you look at it in real dollars, the highest salaried folks in our district are recognizing the highest raise in any given year. And of course, that's commensurate with their responsibility and the workload that they have done last year. And I think this year, that's appropriate. I, I just want to continue to say that I think in the coming years, that, that this district needs to find, I think, a better way of recognizing the value added by each one of the members of the Act 93 group and rewarding them in a, in a way that isn't sort of a group, you know, percentage raise on all salaries. There's even a huge discrepancy between salaries. Like, for instance, Mrs. Noel, who, God bless her, this, this last year, you know, her salary is nowhere near where the other salary is. And so in real dollars, you know, she does not realize anywhere near the raise that potentially other people do. But of course, we all know just how hard she has worked in the last year. And so that's the problem, I think, when, when we apply this in, in this manner. And again, it's not to, not to recognize the hard work of these folks, and not to say that maybe some of them wouldn't, shouldn't have a higher raise, that's not my point. I, I don't like the idea of a, of a set percentage going to these levels of salary. I don't think it serves the taxpayer, of the, of the community well. I don't think it serves, you know, really, the idea of incentivizing the individuals of the Act 93 group when all of them receive the same rate, rate, really, independent of any form of evaluation, as far as I can see. And so I hope, I'll, I'll vote, I'll vote for it. And again, I'm very appreciative of the hard work they've done. I just don't think it's the most appropriate way to recognize the value added by these individuals. And I would hope that we revisit that in the years to come to find a better way of incentivizing and rewarding hard work in that particular group. Thank you.
And I think generally in the past, we have used that approach more so where there was a pool raise, and then it was individually delegated to individuals based on their performance. And I know we've had a lot of conversation about more formal evaluations moving forward that would dictate a more structured evaluation process to support that. I'm also hopeful that our salary study that we are going to be reviewing shortly will help to address some of the discrepancies that we might see, and really give us some real-world feedback about where our employees are, so that we can be competitive and, and show them that we value and appreciate them for retention purposes.
I just wanted to mention that the Act 93 group did not get a raise last year at all. They also didn't get step and column as the teachers did. I think that it really needs to be taken into account, that's what I want.
I would just echo Dr. Smith's comment that, that, you know, we, we have had pretty extensive discussions about that, and I don't think anybody under normal circumstances, you know, prefers a blanket, you know, across the board in, in this particular instance. But, you know, there have been many reasons, but I think that we've structured that way this year, in particular the fact that they did not take a raise. And, and I also want to reiterate that the administrative, the Act 93 group volunteered for that, to, to not take a pay raise last year, and they did not get the step and column increases that the teachers did. So I think that it's more than deserved for the effort that's been put forward in this, the year to end all the years.
Yeah, maybe I'm incorrect, but I didn't think the teachers on, like, step 14 that were received in, in last year either, am I incorrect about that? They moved on step, which is my point, which is our highest folks last year, and the teachers group didn't get paid. And then this year, their percentage on the highest, if you look at step 14, would not be anywhere near 3.75, because most gets eaten up by steps below. And that's, and that's my point. So if you're talking about fairness, the highest, I'm, I'm not advocating necessarily for, for teachers, as everybody knows, I know that I'm not necessarily, I'm advocating for smart policy that gets the best for the buck, for the taxpayer of this community, and also rewards teachers, administrators, and personnel staff for doing a good job. And I don't think that that particular way of, of compensating folks across the board in that manner accomplishes that. And again, it's not that I don't think they deserve that, I just don't think that's the best way to accomplish it. And I'll certainly vote for it, a lot of the reasons you guys are talking about. I didn't say I was voting against it, but I, I really want to advocate for doing it a better way going forward, which I think will anure to the benefit of our best Act 93 people and the benefit of, of people doing their very best for us in, in, in Southern Lehigh as far as the personnel, and also work well for the taxpayer. So it's a win-win when we get smart about how we compensate people in the district as well.
I absolutely agree with you, Oleg, Jeff. I just wanted to point out that they had not gotten a raise last year, they voluntarily didn't want, didn't want a raise. Because I think a lot of people don't hear that when they came in, but you're, you're right.
And I would just say that, that it's, you know, I don't want to confuse this, that this is the policy, and, and helping to fund this was what was done this year under extenuated circumstances.